Mr. Mustarel, would you roll call please?
Ms. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Bono?
Here.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Here.
Mr. Medio?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Mrs. Sabrana?
Present.
Mr. Silva?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Present. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineland Board of Education has called notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time, place, agenda, et cetera. The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, the Press of Atlantic City, Vista Bueno, the Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we stand in, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Mustarel, do we have a resolution for executive session?
We do not.
Mr. Yano, do we have a special presentation?
Yes, we do. This evening, Mrs. DiMarci, Executive Director for Curriculum and Instruction, will present the NJGPA 2024 Spring Results for Vineland High School.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for allowing me this time to present our NJGPA Assessments, the Spring Administration. The NJGPA stands for the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. The statute requires that all 11th grade students take the NJGPA in the spring of their junior year. So these results are for our class of 2025. Students who take the NJGPA and do not meet the minimum requirement, which the cut score is a 725, will have the opportunity to, one, retake the assessment in October of 2024, this fall. They will also be able to have an opportunity to take a second pathway, which would be like an SAT, a PSAT, or an Accuplacer. Or the third pathway, if students are not successful with Pathway 1 or 2, they are able to complete a portfolio. So I've broken this up into math results and ELA results. And then at the end of each section, you will see a comparison of our 2023 versus 2024 results. NJGPA was administered on March 13th and 14th for math. Each day consisted of two 90-minute sessions. I want to first explain the way the state breaks down the NJGPA is graduation-ready or graduation-not-yet-ready. Basically, what that means is students did not meet the passing cut score. So for an example, here in math, we have 71.2% of students that took the math section of the NJGPA that are, at this time, not yet ready, or they did not meet the cut score. But what I want to explain is that our average cut score was a 712, and the passing score was a 725. Graduation-ready for math, we have 28.8% of our incoming 12th graders that did meet the requirement. This is the demographic section. One thing I'd like to highlight is that we do have, in math, a 7.2% increase in our scores from 2023 to 2024. So that is definitely something to celebrate, even though we have a lot more work to do in math as we enter into 24-25 school year. But I did want to celebrate and recognize that we did have a 7.2% increase. ELA results. ELA results. Students are tested on 10th grade standards. Testing dates were March 11th and March 12th. And again, very similar to math. Each day that students do take the assessment, it consists of two 90-minute sessions. You will see a significant increase in our ELA results in just a few moments. But students that were not yet ready or did not meet the cut score was 41.1%. This is a success from last year. We definitely increased. Our district for VHS, 58.9% of our students were graduation-ready, which meant that they passed the ELA section of the NJGPA. Again, the demographic section. Number of students not ready versus ready. Something I think that we should all be very, very proud of is that we had an 18.9% increase from 2023 in ELA. So our students definitely showed lots of progress from 2023 to 2024. I talked earlier about different pathways. Class of 2025, similar to class of 2024, if students did not meet the NJGPA cut score, there are other opportunities for students to meet a passing score and meet their graduation requirement in Language Arts and Math. The first pathway is exactly what we are talking about, is the NJGPA. Again, students that were noted as not yet ready have the opportunity, again in the fall, to take the test, again, the NJGPA, in October. There is a second pathway for students to meet the NJGPA. In ELA, they can take the Accuplacer, the PSAT, or SAT. In math, the same thing. They have the opportunity to take the ACT, the Accuplacer, the PSAT, or the SAT. There is a third pathway, if students are not successful with Pathway 1 or Pathway 2. And this is only available to students that attempted the NJGPA, attempted Pathway 2. This Pathway 3 is a portfolio appeal. Notable Achievements. Class of 2024, we graduated 657 students. We increased our graduation-ready students from 2023. We are continuing to increase our parent guardian student communication and outreach. Curriculum team is working very, very hard to make sure that our curriculum is aligned to the New Jersey state standards, and teachers are provided with effective professional development. And we are basing our decisions on data, making data-driven decisions, allowing teachers to adjust instruction and provide targeted interventions to our students. As we enter into the 24-25 school year, we will be reaching out to our families to make sure they are aware that whether students did meet or they did not meet their graduation requirement, guidance will be reaching out to the students and the parents, making sure they are aware of the options that they have. These alternate pathways will be shared with all students and families. Our Language Arts and Math Supervisors will be discussing the results with our department members. And curriculum has been updated to make sure that we are aligned with our New Jersey state standards. But I just really did want to call attention that we did make some great progress. We have lots of work to do. We're excited to continue to work hard and make sure that all of our students, our class of 2025, meets their graduation requirement, their New Jersey state assessment requirement, just as they have every year. Does anybody have any questions?
You and I spoke before the meeting, so keep up the good work. I'm happy that there is a time that they can retake the test, and it's in the fall.
Yes.
So I think that's good.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments about the HIB report? Do we have any questions or comments on the minutes? For June 17th, 2024 Special Meeting, June 17th, 2024 Executive Session, and June 12th, 2024 Special Meeting? Oh, July, sorry. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Abstain on the executive session, yes, on the two special meetings.
Thank you. Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes, on the two special meetings, I have to abstain on the executive session.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes, to both of the June 17th meeting, and I need to abstain from the July 12th special meeting. Do we have committee reports?
You go first.
Mr. Rivera?
Me? All right.
Mr. Fiocchi?
I'll go. All right. Good evening. The Finance Committee met on August 6th at 8:00 AM via Google Meet. In attendance was Mr. Mustarel, Mr. Yano, Ms. Carey, Ms. Cottis Patti, Mr. Silva, Mr. Rivera, and myself. Following topics were discussed: Grants and AIDS, 24-25 grants totaling $5.3 million; COPS grant for cameras and security features; Renewing contracts are prescription contracts, City of Vineland, SLEO, Complete Care; new contracts, bond counsel for ESIP, financial advisor for ESIP, and DCO will be awarded ESIP on tonight's agenda. RFP for solicitor was discussed. Transportation vans, no bids were received, twice. So we negotiated with two local dealerships to purchase one van from each. Landis partial roof replacement is in the process of being bid out. And Vineland High School North HVAC heat pump project will be going out to bid soon. Following personnel items, NJ Youth Corps, Director of Security, Adjustment Administrative Assistant Salaries, Elimination of One Admin Assistant, and Reassignment of Duties. And then VEA full release, and the current treasurer is retiring and will not be replaced. That's all. Thank you.
Good evening. The Facilities Committee met on Thursday, August 1st, 2024, at 4:30 PM. In attendance were Mr. Sabrana, Mr. Bono, Mr. Medio, Mr. Yano, Mr. Mustarel, Mr. Farinaccio, and myself. Several of the projects were discussed and the budgets, including the Whizlow Phase 2 HVAC, Dan Barcy HVAC, SR3 window project, the district camera bid Phase 2, the VHS electronic sign, and the VHS non-electronic sign. Also discussed were the ESIP RFPs, the SDA granted projects, which include the VHS North partial roof replacement, the Memorial 1998 Edition roof replacement, as well as some work that needs to be done in the roof here at the Landis building. Also included in there, Dan Barcy roof bids went out, Johnstone security doors for the pre-K, 24-25 budgeted construction projects, which include the heat pump at VHS North, a partial replacement, Barcy partial roof replacement. Also, Dan Barcy parking lot issue that needs to be addressed, safety issues. Also discussed were the dispensers for feminine hygiene products in the girls bathrooms throughout the schools, and as well as the sign for the Landis Historical Society that requests for the building be a historical building. Also, technology overview, we had five-year technology plan was revised. Still working on the one-on-one district-wide project for equipment for students. Also, we discussed a new visitation software, hardware, that is going to be deployed this year, Raptor, which will be implemented in the upcoming school year. Currently, equipment is being set up and training is being conducted to be ready for the fall. Thank you.
Good evening. Transportation Committee met on Monday, August 5th via Google Meet at 5:00 PM. In attendance were Mr. Mustarel, Ms. Yano, Mr. Holmes, Mr. Rivera, Mr. Bono, and Ms. Mason. Driver recap, 143 drivers budgeted, 137 field positions, 24 subs, 13 drivers in training. There were no driver absences in the morning and afternoon due to school being closed. Registration, 101 open registrations. Over 50% are just missing documents as opposed to missing information. Accidents, one in June, two in July. Personnel items from the 6-5 Agenda, one bus driver hire, one bus driver resignation. 7-2 Agenda for bus driver. Four bus drivers were hired. 8-7 Agenda, there are three driver resignations. Summary ESY ended on 8/1. We are still running out of district special education students. The team is preparing routes for 24-25 vehicles. We are still waiting on the return of two new vehicles, which have to be retro freight for driver AC. We purchased two transportation vans. Reorganization of the bus lot, consolidation of buses to the main bus lot. Thrillshare is being used as the software that allows us to communicate with parents via email, text, and voice recording. This is similar to Blackboard, but it has significantly less drag time. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met same day at 4:30 PM. Present were Mr. Yano, Mr. DiMarci, myself, and Mr. Bono. We discussed the High Impact Tutoring Grant Summer Program. The program was held at Winslow and DePaulito School from July 2nd to August 1st. We discussed the service learning at VHS, graduation requirement, English Language Arts Intervention Course at VHS, NJGPA presentation. We saw tonight upcoming professional development agendas for the Administrators Academy, Non-Tenures Teacher Academy, the new teacher orientation, and September's District In-Service. We discussed the curriculum and instruction updates for the 24-25 school year, the back-to-school extravaganza, which we invite all of our parents and families and students to join us in, is scheduled for Monday, August 26th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Gattone Stadium. We also, lastly, discussed the clinical experiences, student teaching placements, and college affiliations. Thank you.
Anymore? Okay. The Superintendent has assumed additional duties since July 1st, resulting from the restructuring of Central Office. In order to compensate the Superintendent for assuming these additional duties, the Board is required to enter into an amendment to his contract. State statute and code sets forth certain requirements. The amendment must be approved by the Executive County Superintendent. Mr. Bumpus has issued an approval letter confirming that the amendment is in compliance with the applicable laws and regulations. Additionally, the Board must publish public notice of the proposed amendment. That notice informing the public that the proposed amendment is on file and available for inspection has been published. Also, the Board must publish public notice of the public hearing prior to the Board approval of the amendment. That notice scheduling the hearing for tonight has been published. The proposed amendment fixes the Superintendent's salary for years four and five of his contract. The proposed amendment eliminates a car allowance for both years and transfers his unused tuition reimbursement to years four and five. At this time, I will entertain a motion opening the public hearing on the proposed amendment for the Superintendent's contract. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Rivera, was that you that seconded? Thank you. Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Abstain.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Abstain.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mustarel, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to abstain.
Okay.
Is there anyone that wants to speak during this public hearing on the amendment to the Superintendent's contract? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Abstain.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Abstain.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Does the Board Solicitor have a meeting report?
None for this evening.
Do we have a student representative here tonight? No. Mr. Medio, your microphone's on. Public comment on agenda items or any other matter, limit three minutes, and state your name and address, please. Do we have any yellow sheets?
We do. Mr. Tom Dietz?
Good evening, Board. I've been trying the last month, month and a half, tried to get my daughter placed in another school besides Wallace. And I had multiple conversations with your staff, and they're telling me there's no other school that my daughter can go to, all but Wallace. And, you know, I'm just pulling my hair out, trying to get her moved, and I don't know if any of yous can lead me in the right direction or how we work this, but, I mean, me and my wife don't want her going there. And what do I do in this case? You know, I'm sure the city's big enough to have another school where she can be, where we transport her, but your staff are telling me there's no other school that Jenna can go to.
There's no interaction at this point. I guess somebody from administration will contact you tomorrow. If you can leave your...
It's on there, my phone number?
I got it.
All right. Thank you.
I have nothing else. Anybody else from the public like to speak?
Okay, at this time, I'd like to request discussion and approval regarding personnel items 1.1 through 1.4, as noted on our agenda.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, I'd like to take a moment to recognize three individuals who are being promoted this evening. First, I would like to start with recognizing the newest addition to the Vineland Public Schools team, Mr. Wolf, who will be joining us as our Director of Security. Congratulations, Mr. Wolf. Please come on up.
Thank you. Board members, members of the Administration Central Office, just want to say I'm humbled by the Board selecting me to fill this key position within our school district. I see this opportunity to serve our community as a natural progression of my time in law enforcement, bringing my corporate knowledge and experience to this new task. I believe that if we continue to leverage the fantastic advances in technology and make efficient use of our talented personnel, we can only improve the safety and confidence in our excellent schools. I want to thank God and my family for their unwavering love and support. I can't wait to get to work, and I have a million ideas, so I apologize in advance. I'm that guy. Again, thank you all, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm not sure if he noticed, but on the agenda, we already got him assigned to different positions, and he's got meetings already scheduled for tomorrow, so welcome. And we're going to hit the ground running. Next, I would like to recognize one of our high school teachers, David Croon, who will be our new math supervisor. Please come on up, Mr. Croon.
I just want to say thank you to the Board and the fellow administrative team here at Vineland High School, as well as the teachers at the high school as they supported me through this. I also want to say thank you to my family that are at home watching right now. Couldn't do it without them. Their encouragement and support speaks volumes. I also want to say thank you to the Vineland community as a whole for trusting me with this position as this upcoming school year is here. And then, as a fellow Vineland parent, I'm looking forward to working with the whole community to help all of our students excel. Thank you.
Congratulations. And next, the new principal of our Sergeant Dominic Pillas Middle School, Nicole Oshenek. Please come on up.
Thanks. Good evening. First, I would like to thank Mr. Yano, Central Administration, and the Board for this incredible opportunity. I was fortunate enough to be a part of the Sergeant Dominic Pillas staff when the doors opened, and now I have the privilege of helping shape Pillas' future, and that means the world to me. I would like to thank my dad, who is here, and my mom, who I know is watching the live stream, my husband, Ryan, and the two most amazing kids any parent could ever ask for, Nico and Zach. You continue to support me and encourage me to chase my dreams, and I hope I make you proud. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations. Next, we're going to move into discussion and approval of Procedures and Operation Items 2.1 through 2.7.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, requesting discussion and approval of Buildings and Grounds Items 3.1.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And next, I'd like to request discussion and approval regarding Finance Items 4.1 through 4.20, as noted on our agenda.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding finance items 4.21 through 4.35.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Need to abstain on 4.32, yes to everything else.
Thank you. Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Uh, yes on everything except abstain on item 4.34.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Sabrana. Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are no items on the regular agenda. Next, we have, um, under 14, proposed item for review or discussion or adoption by board members. One, approval of motion confirming completion of superintendent's evaluation process on June 17th, 2024. Approval of the following amended contract, including Executive County Superintendent Approval for term commencing July 1st, 2021 to Ju- June 30th, 2026. Mr. Alfonso Yano Jr., Superintendent of Schools on files with the Board Secretary. Three, approval awarding the following contract for board solicitor for the term of August 8th, 2024 to June 30th, 2025 pursuant to NJSA 18A colon 18A dash 42 and 18A colon 18A dash 5. Professional services shall be awarded for a period not to exceed 12 consecutive months. Do we have discussion?
Are we looping that vote together, or can we split it?
We're gonna split it.
I can record it any way you'd like. Right now, it's together.
Right, yeah.
If you wish to...
I can do a motion to freeze.
Separate it while you're voting, you can do that.
Separate it while we're voting.
So it's all one vote, then? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
All one vote, and you can say yes to...
Yes.
To 14B1?
Yes to 14B2, or whatever.
Whatever.
However you wanna do it.
Got it.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
As to item 14B1 and 2, I abstain. As to item number 3, that is a no. Um, and I do have some concerns regarding...
Wait, just for clarification, is 14B3 a no or an abstention?
It's a no.
Okay. Thank you.
The reason I'm voting no is because, um, I had the opportunity, uh, to review the RFPs that were submitted, um, with respect to this position. Based on the responses of the RFPs, the way they responded, the attorney that will be designated based on the RFP specifically is an attorney with two years' experience who graduated law school two years ago. In comparison to the other RFPs where the attorneys are much more seasoned and experienced in education law, um, not to mention the fact that the per-hour rate is significantly higher than some of the other bids that were placed, and I cannot understand why also the procedures in terms of determining and scoring the RFPs were changed. Traditionally, since I've been a school board member, and I've been a school board member now for many, many, many years, probably over a decade, never once has the Policy and Personnel Committee taken it upon themselves to score an RFP, um, for this particular position. It's generally done in conjunction with, um, administration. Um, I have no objections to being part of the evaluating committee, however, changing it up and not, uh, having anyone from Central Administration who is also directly affected by this vote, um, to me, it just, it does not sound correct, and therefore, because of all those, but particularly because of the fact that I think that we can get a more seasoned attorney at a cheaper price, um, I, I can't support this vote. Thank you.
Mr. Bono?
On items 14, 1, and 2, yes. On item number 3, I vote no. Uh, I don't want to be redundant. I agree with, um, everything that, uh, Ms. Acosta said.
Mr. Fiocchi?
14B1 and 2, yes. 14B3, no.
Mr. Medio?
1 and 2 abstain. Number 3, yes.
Point of clarification. According to guidance that we received in April 2024, uh, Mr. Medio was advised by the School Ethics Commission to recuse himself from any and all matters, including discussions and votes related to Mr. DeSanto's employment. Does that not stand tonight?
I cannot, I cannot, uh, we cannot discuss the conflict, and, um, Mr. Medio is aware of what he can and can't, can't do.
Why can't we discuss the conflict?
I was advised...
He just voted. He just voted and did not recuse himself after the School Ethics Commission weighed in on it in April.
Mrs. Cottisbody, can I say something?
Yes.
I, uh, I went to school here, graduated from Vonland High, and I went on to college. And according to what I just read, I voted on a contract for Florio, Perucci, Steinhardt, Capelli, and Tipton. I voted to employ a law firm.
Now...
We don't have to discuss this any further. Mr. Holmes knows that he has recourse to question my vote through the proper channels.
One of the six bids that were, that responded were Mr. DeSanto. That's why you would recuse yourself from this vote.
He didn't score the bid, though.
Uh, no, I wouldn't recuse myself from this vote. I recuse myself from being involved in the RFP grading.
With all that being said, I think that we should pull this from the agenda, or Mr. Medio should recuse himself until we receive further guidance as to whether or not he should be voting for the next board solicitor.
As I said before, my vote is my vote. I will not recuse myself. I will not withdraw my vote. You have ways that you can question the vote legally, ethically, and however else you want, but the vote is the vote, so go ahead and question it in the proper channels.
Are you, uh, President Cottisbody, are you gonna pull this from the agenda, or...
We're not gonna pull this from the agenda.
Okay. Continue, Scott.
Mr. Rivera? Yes to all three, correct? Thank you. Mr. Sabrana?
Yes to all three.
Mr. Silva?
I have to abstain from 14B1 and 2, and yes to 3.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes to 14B1 and 2, no to 14B3.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes to all three.
Motion carries.
Are there any questions or comments as to the itemized bill for May 2024 through June and June 2024? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Holmes, were you the first motion?
No.
Who was the first motion?
Rob was.
Thank you, Mr. Bono. Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are no emergent items? Old business? New business? Board member comments? I'm gonna start with Mr. Fiocchi.
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Acosta?
I just want to wish everyone, um, a wonderful remaining last four weeks of summer, um, and I look forward to seeing everybody back in school, and thanks, Central Administration, for always working very hard, um, developing new ideas and strategies to help our students move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Medio?
I say enough tonight.
Mr. Bono?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Rivera?
I'd like to congratulate all the new hires and new positions and new roles that you are gonna be taking on come the, the fall, and some starting tomorrow, as I hear that you have some meetings already. I look forward to working with you all. I look forward to what you can bring to the table, which I know is gonna be great, 'cause you, you're put in those positions because you are, were the best of the best. And, uh, just like to wish everyone a continued great summer, and we'll see you guys in September.
Remind everybody there's an August 21st meeting. Mr. Sabrana?
Thank you. Mr. Wolf, welcome. Uh, you have an impressive resume, and I know that you're going to be putting all of your effort into making sure that our schools are safe for our students and our staff. It's a big job, and we have a big district, a lot of school buildings, a lot of, a lot of city, but we, we've done some things to help get the ball rolling by upgrading our security cameras, and I'm sure you're aware of that project and other things that are gonna be going on. I look forward to working with you any way I can. I had something to do with that back in the day when I worked here, and I'm, of course, interested in that because, um, that's our job, number one. Mrs. Oshennick, um, congratulations. I was really pleased to be able to sit in, to fly on the wall, through your interviews, and very impressed with your, your resume, um, and you come highly recommended from everyone I know at your school. I know you're gonna do a fantastic job. Good luck. That's it.
Mr. Silva?
Yes, thank you. Um, Mr. Wolf, congratulations and welcome. It's been a long time coming, but you're here, and we're glad that you're here, um, to keep our students and our staff safe. Uh, Ms. Oshennick, congratulations on your appointment. I know Mr. Masonette's upset back there, but he'll be all right. Um, Mr. Kruhn, congratulations on your, uh, newly hired position, and lastly, congratulations to Samantha Ruth also as a new Winslow teacher. Um, thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
Let me just say this. We are governed by school ethics. We are governed by, uh, all of the codes there, so you better believe I'm gonna get on this tomorrow. Um, on a lighter note, congratulations to Mr. Wolf, to Ms. Oshennick, and Mr. Kruhn. Glad to have you all, and Mrs. Ruth as well. Thank you.
Yes, just a few updates. Uh, just want to remind everyone, we have our next board meeting on the 21st. Uh, I also want to celebrate and recognize our ESL teacher from Durand, Carolina Mills. She was named the 2024-2025 Cumberland County Teacher of the Year, an exciting honor. Yesterday, she was recognized on the campus of TCNJ, and she continues, uh, to compete for the position of, or, or the acknowledgement of State Teacher of the Year Award, which will be announced later on in the school year. So we're very excited about Carolina. Uh, Durand School is very proud of the work that she has done for our students, and our district is also very excited about what she is doing with our students and representing our school district and community all across the state of New Jersey. We're also wrapping up another successful summer of, uh, another successful summer of learning. It's been great to see our students, uh, thrive in our High Impact Tutoring Program and our ESY Program that continues. So school is not over yet for our ESY students, but we are already thinking about those first few days in September. Uh, next week, Wednesday and Thursday, freshman orientation, big day at the high school, VHS Tanner Building, 9 to 12. Can't wait to welcome the class of 2028. Uh, the 150th anniversary of Vonland High School scheduled for April, um, excuse me, August 20th in the VHS South Auditorium. Please join us in celebrating this important milestone. Our first-ever Back-to-School Extravaganza is scheduled for August 26th here at Gattone Stadium. All of our schools will be represented, we'll have vendors, we'll even have a bus for you to practice, you know, strapping in and how to safely exit the vehicle. So, if you've always liked to get into those different types of activities where the community's coming together, August 26th is the day. Be sure to keep an eye on our social media pages as we continue to share important and upcoming dates, and congratulations to all of our folks who were promoted today. I also would like to, uh, recognize, uh, the work that our team has put into getting our buildings ready. Uh, we also celebrated Dr. Rossi today and his upcoming retirement. We had a great day with lots of Eagles chants and, and activities with the Phillies and sports rated, related activities. Wanted to see Mr. Dr. Rossi, uh, do some ballroom dancing for us, but he did not, you know, show us his moves, not yet at least, so thank you.
Okay, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Oshennick. Um, we're looking forward to really good things with you. Mr. Masonette, I'm sorry, but I think you, you'll be okay, though, right? Mr. Kruhn, congratulations. Mr. Wolf, uh, we're really looking forward to this, as Mr. Silva said, long time coming. There's a lot of things that, you know, um, we've been talking about, and we're looking forward to our ad hoc security meeting on Monday morning, so you don't even know about that yet, but it's there. Um, so, I just want to remind everyone, we do have one more meeting on August 21st, and everyone have a great summer, and we'll see you then. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.